Good evening. It is Wednesday, February 15th. It is 5:12 and we are in the Nashua High School North Boardroom. With us this evening, we have Christina Darling.
Here.
Jessica Brown. We do have a quorum. We also have Dr. Kimberly Scharfde. And we have a few guests this evening as well. So our first item of business is an update on an in-service day that is going on on the 20th of this month.
Yes. We are very excited. So we have an in-service day for staff. It is teacher choice. So we have organized activities in the morning, a morning session, and also an afternoon session. Altogether, we have over 30 opportunities for teachers to engage in. They can choose whatever activity they want. We also have a couple of teachers who have designed their own learning plans, which they have submitted to their building administrators, and then they got those plans approved. I'm very excited. I keep talking about David and Meredith Lieben. They are going to be joining us for two sessions on the 20th. I will say that right now, I think we have 230-ish elementary teachers, administrators, and paraprofessionals signed up for that morning session with the Liebens. We're really excited with the change in legislation regarding reading instruction and also with all of the shifts that we're seeing from the Department of Ed, the letters training that has been provided to teachers free of charge, and then also kind of some of the movement that we've made in our own district around reading instruction. This is very timely. I think our teachers are really excited about it. And we're just looking for a great day of learning. I did want to call out the members of SEAT, so the Special Education Administrative Team. They have been amazing to work with. They have provided all kinds of opportunities, not only that they planned anyway, but also in response to some teacher feedback. So we reached out to special educators and we asked them, what type of professional development are you looking for? What will be most meaningful and impactful for you? So based on their feedback, I can say Anne Price, Alessa Cunningham, Dan Alexander, Chelsea Gillis, the whole team, they've been incredibly responsive. And I think the special education teachers are really excited about the opportunities. Additionally, one of our priorities this year is to make sure that our paraprofessionals have the opportunity to engage in almost all of the same opportunities that teachers can engage in, so that way we have a common understanding. There's common language being used. And then also, when it comes to our instructional practices, everybody's on the same page. That was a big piece of feedback that I heard from paraprofessionals back on November 1st, when I sent out a survey. They said, hey, listen, we're working with students who have the highest needs. Like, we're some of the most critical people in your district, which they are. And, you know, they wanted to make sure that they have the same type of high-quality training as the teachers. So I will thank Mr. Donovan, who made it possible so that we could pay those teachers to come and attend. I mean, the paraprofessionals to come and attend, totally optional for them to come, but I'm really excited about the attendance that we'll be seeing on that day. So in addition to the SEAT folks, I also wanted to just recognize our curriculum leads at the high school. They have provided some content-specific professional development for teachers. Additionally, our UA coordinators. So now, since last year, we added an additional UA coordinator for each of the UA content areas. So we have one for elementary and for secondary. And largely, both the elementary and the secondary coordinators for each content area are working together. And they've developed some great professional development opportunities for the UAs. And then, of course, our peer coaches, our instructional coaches that we hear from all the time, May Duprat, Beth Wheeler, Monica Tino, Angela St. Lawrence, Erin Putnam, Allison Martinez, and also Carrie Burns and Ann Altman, they have been really integral in making sure that we have great opportunities. So I'm excited. I just want to also say that every opportunity that we have provided aligns with what our instructional priorities are that we have defined. And Nashua's moving. Like, we're moving. And it's really exciting. So just wanted to call that out.
Excellent. That sounds like some amazing learning opportunities. I'm really excited that you're getting paras and teachers working collaboratively, so that I like the idea of moving forward with common language. And, you know, the teachers keep -- I've been asking for high-quality professional development and specialized subjects, and you're delivering. So thank you. Anything to add?
I am so excited. I am so excited to see that trauma-informed practices and teacher self-care gets addressed because I think a lot of our teachers are feeling really severe burnout. I don't blame them. I don't know how they're doing what they're doing. And I'm looking forward to some of those individuals maybe learning things that can help them get through every day, even though it's hard. And I love that we're team-building. So I think this is great. Can I come to this? And just hang out, watch?
I think when it comes to the teacher self-care, we want to make sure that -- so no administrators are allowed. We want to make sure the teachers have a safe space to engage in conversation. But I definitely agree with you. Our teachers need some love, for sure.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So next up on the agenda is Youth Council. And Casey, go ahead.
Great. So Casey's going to talk a little bit about adding some Student Assistance Program counselors, or SAPs, to our Title I schools.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Casey Castor, the Executive Director at the Youth Council. We have worked, I believe, since 2004, had Student Assistance Program counselors in the Nashua School District. For a long time, it was just the high school level. And then in about 2017, we were able to get outside funding from a project called IDN that gave us one middle school counselor. That was split between two of the schools, two of the three middle schools. And so last year, the district made an investment in expanding that program and adding one additional counselor, adding two additional counselors, so that we had one counselor in each school. So right now, we have a full-time counselor serving both of the Nashua High Schools and all three of the Nashua Middle Schools. The way that the Student Assistance Program works is it's a referral-based program. Generally, we work primarily with the guidance department and administrators in the building, but also a lot of referrals come either from parents in the district or teachers. Really, any folks who work with kids can make a referral. Generally, the kids that we see in the Student Assistance Program are folks who haven't yet been identified as having a mental health diagnosis or a substance use disorder, but have been showing either, you know, risk factors for that. Maybe they're starting to have a lot of behaviors in the schools. Maybe they're having a lot of absences. And so our folks can actually meet with them, do some assessments, mental health and substance use assessments, and then offer some individual counseling services that we call supportive counseling. So it's different from therapy in the sense that they're not diagnosing a youth and then holding ongoing therapy. They're really working on a supportive basis. And then working with the family when they identify that a student may need what we would call, in the multi-tiered system of support, a level-three support that would need therapy or treatment, outside treatment. Working with those families to kind of connect them with the resources. So a lot of times, it can be very intimidating for a family just to get a big list of, here's all the therapy resources in the city, make some calls and get on some waiting lists. Our staff can work with them to kind of check in and see how things are going. And then continue to meet with that student while they're waiting to get, you know, a more intensive treatment. The other piece that the Student Assistance Program offers at the upper levels, the higher levels, is it's very heavily focused on substance use prevention. And so we do a lot of work on the universal substance use prevention side, so just really like the SAD clubs at the high schools, and we're trying to get them off the ground again at the middle schools. Education, you know, opportunities. Our SAPs go into health classes at the high school, and we're working on that at the middle school level as well, to support students, to make sure that, you know, a lot of the risk factors that can lead to substance use are also tied in with mental health risk factors. You know, if a student has an untreated mental health condition, they're more likely to develop a substance use disorder down the road. And so where we've been working at the high school, at the upper levels, also in conjunction with Project Succeed, where we have a full-time counselor based there for any students who go to that program, either for an intervention or as an alternative to suspension, we're able to really kind of meet the need at an early level and make sure that students aren't, you know, having years' worth of behaviors accumulating and really having some unrecognized issues. And so within the schools, you know, we'll do support groups, we'll do individual counseling, we'll work with, you know, parents as we can and support those youth. And I passed out some numbers, just to give you a sense. Certainly, we've seen, you know, massive growth in the number of youth that we've served, in the number of students just since last year with the addition of the two additional counselors. So in the entire school year last year, between the SAP program and the students that we saw at Project Succeed, we served 425 students in the Nashua District. And this year, as of the end of January, we've already served 458 students. So we count both the number of students served as well as sessions, and sessions is really any time that a student meets with a counselor.
I just wanted to call that out. So already in the past five months, the Youth Council has served more students than they did last year for the entire year. Just wanted to make sure that I called that out. And I specifically wanted to call out the middle school sessions. So last year, they held 198 middle school sessions. This year so far, 809 middle school sessions. And then additionally, when it comes to Project Succeed, last year for the entire year, 165 counseling clients. And then this year so far, 127 clients. So the workload has increased exponentially.
Yeah, we're certainly, I mean, we've definitely seen, you know, demand increase just in general with youth coming back from COVID and kind of the experiences that they've had with being out of school for so long and coming back. But I think also, you know, having that availability of counselors, in a lot of ways, offers the guidance departments. I mean, with the Project Succeed program, we've gotten feedback from administrators at the high school and middle school level that not only having the program where the students can go and be in the program and, you know, continue to catch up on academics, but really the social-emotional support and then the follow-up. So they all see a counselor who does an assessment, and then that assessment is sent out to all of the administrators involved with that student. Sometimes they're having reentry meetings, and it's really offering, what we've heard from some of the administrators is it's offering them the opportunity to have that face-to-face with a counselor who's met with the student and had some time with them and really talk about, okay, what's next and how do we support them? And having not been at the elementary level until, you know, hopefully with this proposal, I know that, you know, there's behaviors that are happening at the elementary level that often are very similar to what we're seeing at the upper grades. And if we can kind of get, start addressing those earlier and identifying students that need that service, you know, we can really start to mitigate the problems as we go up.
I just want to clarify one thing. So with this proposal, we wouldn't be adding work to the counselors who already exist. We'd be bringing on two new staff members, or the Youth Council would be assigning two new staff members to our elementary schools. So the staff members would go to Fairgrounds Elementary and also to Amherst Elementary School. And the principals of those schools expressed a need for these services based on, you know, some of the behaviors, but also some of, I think, the residual effects of trauma that students have experienced, the effects of COVID, all different sorts of things. The principals, like I said, have identified that this is a need within their schools. And I guess the reason why I wanted to highlight kind of the number of students served and also the sessions from this year and the last five months versus the entirety of last year is that this continues to be an increasing need in our district to address the mental health, you know, issues that our students are dealing with.
I have a few questions, if that's okay. Go ahead. I just have one question. What is Amherst Street and what was the other school?
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds Elementary. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Darling.
So like, I see 809 sessions, middle school sessions, and that blows my mind because that is just so many. And that's split between all three middle schools or just two?
All three.
All three. What's the average caseload per counselor in those middle schools?
In the middle schools, it's around, well, let me just check. It's around 30. One of the schools, the counselor at Penet Chuck, has been seeing fewer individual students but doing a lot more support groups. And so that would be, you know, maybe an eight-week session. And so, but yeah, it's around 30 for each middle school level.
Is that like standard for, I don't know what a normal counselor would have out in?
Yeah, so I think it's important to really, you know, clarify the distinction between a therapist and an SAP counselor because one of the things that is true with the SAP counselors is that the goal is that it is short-term supportive counseling. So it's really an early intervention to connect students to a therapist who would see them, you know, on an ongoing basis for potentially years. So 30, I would say, you know, where we, this is our first year where we've had counselors full-time in each middle school at the high school level. Each of those counselors has a caseload somewhere around more like 60. But that's also because they're seeing students who maybe are vaping, and they'll see them for three sessions. And then if they don't want additional services and there aren't specific mental health needs identified, then they will not continue to see them on an ongoing basis. So I guess what I would say is, yeah, it really is a rotating caseload. And I mean, ideally speaking, if there was enough therapy services within this region and this area, they might have, they might see even more students because they would be able to move more students more quickly onto a therapeutic caseload.
Yeah.
But where, you know, if you have a student who you get on a waiting list, and then they're waiting six to eight months to see a therapist, that, you know, the way that our program is designed, they continue to still see that student until they're able to connect with a therapist. Generally speaking, students who already have therapy, like are already seeing someone from Greater Nashua Mental Health or another private provider, would not come to the SAP because the SAP really is that early intervention assessment and then, you know, working with them. If there are cases where a student has a therapist, generally, our SAP would connect with them directly with permission from the student and their family to talk about, you know, what are the services that they may need at school and how would that look different from therapy?
So just to throw this out there, I love having SAPs in the school. I know I've contacted the one in Fairgrounds Middle School more than once, and absolutely My biggest concern with the SAP specifically is I'm wary about approving to add people to the elementary level if the middle school level is still seeing too great of a need, if it would be more beneficial to put two counselors in a middle school. Then again, I wish we had an SAP in every single school we had.
So I can tell you, we have, so we had $1.7 million worth of reimbursement funds, Title I funds. We can only spend those funds at the Title I elementary schools that qualify for Title I funding. So, I mean, I'd like to add five SAPs at the middle school, but we don't have a funding source for that. We do have a funding source for the Title I schools, thank you. And so we specifically reached out to the principals and we said, okay, where is the greatest need? And so we thought, we talked to Casey, and Casey said, I can, with, you know, reasonable assurance, hire or I can send two SAPs over to the elementary level. That is like a reasonable expectation. We didn't have too much of a lofty goal that we couldn't meet. Two seemed reasonable. And again, we wanted to make sure that we used those services in the schools that needed them the most. But we can't use our Title I funds for any other schools but the Title I schools.
Okay. I think that is it for me for questions. And I really hope that we can find funding to get many more.
So I, let's see, I guess we don't have any more questions. You guys have been really informative. Thank you guys very much. I'm looking for a motion to approve the SAP contract between the Youth Council. Excuse me. And the Nashua District presented the amount. I'm sorry, I haven't talked, I was fine until I had to talk in.
I recommend to approve SAP contract between the Youth Council and Nashua School District as
I recommend to approve the SAP contract between the Youth Council and Nashua School District as presented in the amount of $92,300 to be paid for by Title I funds.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's lovely to see you again. I feel like I run into you like every other nonprofit that I go to.
You are. All right. So the next item up for bids is the Lexia Core.
Yes.
We have another lovely guest with us.
We have another guest today. It's a small group here, but I love it. So with us, we have Susan Blair, who is our Title I Director. And Susan's going to talk a little bit about Lexia Core 5. And again, I just want to emphasize, we have this reimbursement of Title I funds. So we're trying to be really strategic based on needs assessments from each school in terms of where we actually spend these funds.
So good evening. So I'm delighted to be here tonight to represent the principals and Kimberly in talking about some of the choices we've made with regard to spending our Title I funds. What's really important to understand is that our Title I funds are supportive of whatever the district is already doing. So there's a terminology about supplanting and supplementing. So our funds are to supplement, and they target, as Kimberly has already said, our six Title I schools. So this evening, we are looking for permission to purchase a technology-based reading program that is for all students pre-K through 5. That is a mix of independent digital activities and data-driven, teacher-led instruction. Through this format, students are, it is a more effective approach, plus students are more engaged. The program focuses on the five essential components of reading, in case we don't all know them. I interviewed many teachers that struggled with this, so I'll just go over them. Phonological awareness, which is the awareness of sound, similarity with sounds, you don't need any words or anything in front of you. Phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. There's also an aspect of the program on instructional analysis, which lots of kids struggle with, which is your prefixes and your suffixes and multi-syllabic words. It also has a wonderful component in that it helps with intervention with young students and their struggling areas of reading. So it, what it does is, as the children are reading and participating in the computerized program, it actually flags without stopping a child from doing what they're doing, but it flags an area of difficulty, and then it will readjust what it's asking of the child based on how the child is performing. It also gives the teachers valuable information on what components of reading a child is struggling with and how they can support the child. So we're looking at purchasing this for grades K through 5, and the Title I component of it is a small portion of it, but certainly does target intervention and supportive early learning and reading. We all know that by the time they get to third grade, if they're struggling with any of these structures, it really slows down their progress in all subject areas. So reading is the foundation for their learning, really from third grade on.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Darling?
What system are they using now?
So right now, we have four schools that are using Lexia. They're non-Title schools. I was actually trying to find, so Mr. Jonathan Foster and I, Jonathan's our data analyst, we actually, before we tried to move forward to purchase Lexia for the Title schools that requested it, we wanted to see what the usage looked like in the four schools that are utilizing Lexia right now. I will say that they are heavily relying on Lexia for an intervention tool. And we are definitely seeing, so we've also been looking at some of the progress monitoring data, and we're definitely seeing an improvement in students' reading abilities. So yes.
So I know of our Title I schools, there are two schools that presently use it, and my understanding is they've been using it for a while. So this purchase will allow us to add enough so that all six school-wide schools will be part of this program.
Presently, Led Street uses Acadians, I mean, I'm sorry, Lexia, and then Dr. Crisp. That's correct. Yep.
I'm actually really excited for this because as we were walking in here tonight, my youngest son was telling me about Lexia and how much he likes it. And I was like, wow, that's like on my agenda tonight, everything.
Thanks, bud.
So yeah, no, you got the kid's approval, and that's what matters to me. And he's been loving reading and working on reading, and the fact that he's only five right now, that's amazing. I love what our teachers are doing in our elementary schools.
It's really about the engagement, but the nice thing about this, it is also supports targeting instruction where a child is struggling.
And I see there's not sight words.
Not as far as I know in this program. I'm sure there will be other ways that they introduce sight words because they're high-frequency words and we can't sound them out, right? But yeah, they'll get it.
Oh, I remember when my oldest was doing it and having the flashcards with the sight words, and never again.
Oldie but a goodie. So I just kind of want a little clarification. I think it sounds great, especially for getting good results with the schools where it's being used right now. This is an assessment tool and also an intervention tool, both?
It's also, it's a reading program. So there's teacher instruction, there's teacher-led instruction, and then there's activities that children participate in based on whatever the instruction is or is wherever they are in reading. And then based on that computerized practice, the program is able to adjust what it's asking of a child until the child feels confident and comfortable in the skill that's being taught. It also allows teachers to really take a look at those targeted skills and what the children are struggling in.
Okay. So the teachers can go back and get that information and say, all right, clearly, maybe everyone in our class is struggling with sight words. It's something we need to review. Or this particular small group of students is struggling with phonics.
It actually collects norm reference data for the teacher to use to take a look at how the kids are doing.
Yep. So just, so it's not a core program, it's not a core reading program, it's a supplemental resource that we use as an intervention. But just like Susan said, it collects normative data so that we can see for all the students who are using Lexia, let's say at the second grade level, we know where approximately we would predict them to be, and that helps to inform us where our students are.
Excellent. I think it sounds like it has a great amount of potential. It's already working well. Thank you. So I would like a motion to recommend to approve the contract with Lexia Core 5 as presented in the amount of $70,434 to be paid for by Title I funds. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So the next one we have to present tonight is Acadians, which is a comprehensive benchmark progress monitoring and diagnostic assessments for reading. So this measures if a student is making appropriate growth acquisition in reading. It is a universal screening and progress monitoring tool that includes the following. It identifies students who need additional support. It evaluates the effectiveness of instructional supports that are being provided. It also provides support to RTI or MTSS. Some people call it MTSSB if the behavior aspect of it is included. And it enables our educators to view item-level And it enables our educators to view item-level detail analysis. So in other words, like you said, if all of our kids aren't getting their high-frequency words or their sight words, it targets those things. So if children are struggling with digraphs or blends of some type, it will target that for them. It's a research-based tool that identifies exactly where the student is struggling so that they can receive instructional support and get back on track. We're really targeting helping our kids before they slip and slide down that slope that we don't want them to go down.
So the difference between Acadient and Lexia is that Acadient really helps to tell us if we have a child who's at risk of experiencing reading difficulty. Also can help to be an indicator for dyslexia that would prompt additional testing and then additional intervention. And then we'd use a tool like Lexia Core V to offer that intervention.
All right. Any questions regarding Acadient?
You actually just answered it. I was going to ask, like, if there was too much of a redundancy between programs.
I'm glad we're tag-teaming each other because we really didn't talk about this beforehand. So thank you.
No, that's great. So when you administer the Acadient, does this tend to be when, like, a teacher would, hey, we're kind of flagging the student seems to have these kind of tendencies, let's go check them out, they're going to try the Acadient, and then see if they maybe have some markers for dyslexia?
So we'll use it as a universal screener for all students, and then we'll continue to progress monitor and specifically target students who are at risk of reading difficulty so we can see if, in fact, like Susan said, our interventions are effective.
Right.
The other thing I just wanted to add really quickly is, so right now, we administer the BAS, which is an assessment that gives us, that yields some valuable information. It's very time-consuming, and it's one data point that takes a long time for teachers to actually retrieve data from, in terms of administering the assessment. It takes a lot of time away from instruction. There are certainly students who benefit from the BAS, depending on exactly what we're looking for. It helps to tell us what a student's reading behavior looks like. But the thing about the BAS is that it's one snapshot in time, and it's based on students' performance against a reading passage that they might not actually have any knowledge about when it comes to background knowledge and also vocabulary. And so while it can yield some useful data, it might not be appropriate for us to spend so much time on this one snapshot in time for all of our students and take away from instructional time. Acadient is like a quick and dirty, universal screener for everyone, and it really helps us to dig deeply into what students need. And I think that's the shift that our teachers are, well, I don't think, I know, that's the shift that our teachers are looking for. They know for some kids, they're going to continue to administer the BAS because that's what their students need, but globally, a tool like Acadient is a lot more efficient and also yields better information for them.
That's excellent to hear. So are we thinking of, except in targeted situations, phasing out the BAS for across the board?
Well, we're definitely going to talk about that on Monday, and we're going to talk about where the research leads us. I think the research suggests that spending so much time on administering the BAS is not beneficial to students.
All right. And can I ask, how long does it typically take to administer the BAS?
Like 15 minutes per student.
Okay. And that's a one-on-one teacher?
One-to-one, yeah.
So you're using a lot of human resources and a lot of classroom instructional time. And yeah, it makes a lot of sense. Is the Acadient something that would be, still take the teacher away from the classroom, or is this, is it online curriculum?
So it's an online assessment. We've been administering across many of our, well, we're piloting a couple of schools right now. Like I said, it's quick and dirty, kids love it, teachers are getting great information. I will say that Erin Putnam, our ELA instructional coach, she's been really great about training our reading specialists, training our administrators, and training our teachers so that they would have this tool at their disposal whenever they need it. And the other thing I just want to call out is that teachers have been asking for something like this. You might remember the old Dibbles Next assessment, right? So the folks who created Dibbles are the same people who have created Acadient. It's based on that same research.
All right. Thank you. Anything else to add?
Nothing.
All right. I like, you know, high-efficiency evaluations. I think it's important to have the data so that we can find out where we need to put our, give our supports and our money to students, but we don't want to be taking away from valuable instructional time all the time. So that's great. All right. So I move to approve the contract for Acadient as presented in the amount of $26,667.90 paid for by Title I and operating budget funds.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
$0.90.
Couldn't just round it up?
Or down.
Or down.
Yeah.
Hold all these people. Don't make this confusing. It's already, we're working with like six-figure numbers half the time.
Well, when we're writing grants, it has to be exact.
Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to add?
No, thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Darling?
I am all set.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are adjourned at 5:48. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.